Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 14th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence to reflect on the duties of the Board and the town, and also to keep in mind our soldiers who are serving abroad and in the United States. Thank you. In accordance with mass general law, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by East Long Meadow Cable Access Television and also by the Selectmen's Office, and have to ask if anyone else in the audience is recording the meeting. Could you state your name?
Ben.
Hi, Ben, how are you? You're from the Republican? Okay. Our first public forum person is Paul Rusio. Paul, come on up.
How are you? Good. Here, I have my number. And Anthony.
Good.
And Nick. Or Ricky Shake Sushi. I'll call. He does all the work.
You're right. You got that right.
Well, I know I only have five minutes, so I did write my speech down, so we don't take up any more time and I don't continually babble.
Okay.
But I would like to discuss the zoning bylaw regarding the commercial vehicles and the equipment forward by Mr. Turner. And hopefully, we can come up with some sort of solution to the problem without wasting any more time, energy, or money for the taxpayers of East Long Meadow. First and foremost, in the history of East Long Meadow, have we ever had this many complaints on one specific bylaw that you know of?
I don't believe so, not that I know of.
So I assume that's known. All right. I've done a little research in the public records on requests for enforcement. There are approximately 60 such requests. If Mr. Turner's intent is to bring to light what he sees as a problem, then mission accomplished. I see this as very vengeful, it's harassment, and just short of judicial malpractice. In review of the 60 or so complaints on public record, it is clear to me that Mr. Turner does not understand this bylaw as it stands. Forty-five of the 60 requests for enforcement, after investigation by the zoning officer, were deemed no violation. Letters were sent to the other 15, and corrections were made. As of 10/14 today, all the violations have been either worked on or corrected. A few of the examples of no violations, two properties that were cited have active building permits. So obviously, they have contractors' trucks and equipment on site. One property is a farm exempt. One property has land in Springfield, and that particular owner is a member of the Home Business Association. One property has a storage container, which there is no bylaw for that. Three of the four show pictures of utility trailers. Those trailers are used for recreational vehicles, which there is no set bylaw. People use them for their sports equipment, jet skis, boats, things like that, to transport them. And one was an emergency service truck, which I think should be exempt, if it isn't already. So tonight, I would like to propose that we take a step back, review this bylaw, update it, and make it more clear as to what is a commercial vehicle, make the public more aware of the bylaw, and review the requirements for enforcement. I propose a committee of the town officials from building, planning departments, the Home-Based Business Association, and the committee presently, I believe, which is reviewing town bylaws, to get together with two or three of townspeople, including Mr. Turner. I firmly believe if you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. I will be more than happy to serve on this committee and feel in a short period of time we can resolve this and move on with a positive solution. I appreciate your time, and hopefully, we can do something.
Appreciate your input and your thought regarding this.
Thank you.
We will take it under advisement. Thank you, Paul.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Our 6:05 public forum person is Mr. Turner. Come on up.
How are you?
Good.
Okay. I disagree with the figures that 45 were not, and there were some mistakes made by me and also Mr. Gorman. Mr. Halyer had to do was say they have an open building prepared, and that was it. But I do resent the fact that I live in a residential neighborhood, and there were, you know, panel trucks that say, you know, Big Y, or, you know, Locksmith, and stuff like that. This law was put there so that commercial vehicles, if you want a commercial vehicle on your land, park it in your garage. If you've got a five-ton truck, you can't park it in your garage, so it doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. We shouldn't have big boxcars in neighborhoods. We shouldn't have big trucks in our neighborhood. We shouldn't have a diesel truck sitting next door that wakes you up or wakes anyone up. And the hardest person to complain about is your neighbor, because you live with him every day. And the aesthetic quality of this town in the past 10, 12 years has gone down, down, down. You drive around town, and there's all sorts of commercial vehicles. If people can't put them in their garage or park them out of sight behind their house, they don't belong in a residential neighborhood. We have very high taxes here in town, and I expect that residential neighborhoods should be residential neighborhoods. And getting back to Mr. Halyer, Mr. Halyer has issued fines.
Mm-hmm.
And what I did was, I followed the money trail. And when he issues a fine, he has to take that fine and turn it into the collector of taxes. He's not done that once.
Have the fines been paid?
Has he collected money for fines?
What I'm saying is, he may have issued a fine but hasn't been paid.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, then obviously, A, he can't turn money into the town if it hasn't been paid, and B, I hate to do this, but what is your complaint tonight? Is it about existing properties, or is it about something new?
I have nothing new to complain about. I passed in some letters to him.
Okay.
He sent letters out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll get back to some history. I came in here, and I said one time, I didn't feel like this man was fined $100.
Well, and once again, without getting into individual details, because we go over the same thing every month.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do. Is that a complaint?
Yes, it is.
That he has handled and found no change?
He has not handled his complaint at all. This complaint was first issued, and it was in July of 2013. And in 2014, he issued a fine. So here's a two-and-a-half, a five-and-a-half-ton truck sitting in someone's front yard. Okay?
But he's issued a fine, so he has handled--
He's issued a fine for $100, but the fine has never been paid, to my knowledge.
But it's not, he can't pay the fine. He can only issue the fine. If the taxpayer does not pay the fine or carries it further, then--
It's put on his tax--
Right. So the process goes.
But since the truck has not been moved since the fine--
Okay.
There should be a lot more fines assigned to this vehicle.
Well, that will have to take up with him. But if he's already handled that situation by finding the person--
In other words, there doesn't have to be any complete follow-through by Mr. Halyer. Is that what you're trying to tell me?
No, I'm trying to tell you that he has notified the taxpayer, he has fined the taxpayer. If the taxpayer chooses not to listen to the, you know, I could have a truck in my yard and just ignore Mr. Halyer. He can't come in, tow the truck away, he can't come in and do anything else, he can just keep fining him.
That's 100 percent right.
Okay.
But he didn't continue to find the person. He just stopped. He sent one letter--
Okay.
And with one ticket for one fine that has not been paid.
Okay.
And for the next day, it should have been $200.
So we will follow up on that.
And the next day, it was $200.
Okay.
He has not followed up on anything.
Well, I wouldn't say that, maybe in this case, but I will find out from him what the process going forward is.
How would we know if the ticket was actually issued for the second day or the third day? Would it be a continuance of the first ticket? Would there actually be another ticket that's issued? I'm just thinking, maybe it's in the computer and not an actual hard ticket.
Right, and as it isn't paid, it keeps multiplying. We'll have to find out about that, yeah.
Okay. So we can check--
I mean, I've got things that he sent letters to, and it's a year and a half later, absolutely nothing has been done.
Well, we'll find out what has been done, because obviously, if he sent tickets, then he, something has been done.
Well, if he sent a letter--
Yeah.
And didn't go any further than that, he hasn't been very thorough.
Well, if he sent a letter and ticketed them--
He did not ticket them.
Okay.
He just sent letters.
Asking them to remove their--
Yes.
Okay, and they haven't done it?
No.
Okay, now how many properties are you talking about?
About 40.
Wow. From what, I don't know where Mr. Rusio got his information from, but it seems like there are 60 properties that have either been answered one way or the other.
Forty-five.
So based, well, he had 45.
Forty-five of 60.
Well, he had 45 that were no change, that was, he didn't find anything, and 15 that he sent letters to.
There you go.
So if that's the case, and if that's public record, then that's going against what you're saying. So he has done something.
Well, I've got letters from Mr. Halyer that are different from those.
Sure. I was in court with one of the ticketed individuals two weeks ago Friday. A friend of mine, I met with this individual, and Dan, and Mr. Gorman was there also. The court, if you bring this to the court, basically what they do, they want you to stand in front of a magistrate, and the magistrate will say, "You guys work it out for yourselves." Nine times out of 10. If you go in to see a judge, the judge is going to frown upon the fact that you didn't want to discuss it and come to terms with that individual. And I speak through 30 years of being a landlord and a property manager and going to housing court many times. So you learn the ropes. So we went in, we discussed it, and the ticket was thrown out, because the individual proved that a commercial vehicle does not necessarily, if it has a commercial plate, is not necessarily a commercial vehicle, and that's through mass registry. So we kind of look like idiots in court. And every time somebody goes into court, we're going to have to mediate it prior to. So we don't have to pay to go to court. We can mediate it right here. So I think that's a waste of time, energy, and money for the taxpayers, so--
Okay, I'm gonna--
That was my experience.
I'm gonna reply to that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All trucks, whether you own a pickup truck or what, will have a commercial plate on it. That's been in Massachusetts for years. But if it's painted, and it has a DOT number on it, it's not a personal vehicle. It is a commercial vehicle. And there's a difference between somebody with a pickup truck, or somebody that works as a carpenter, and he's got a truck, and he's got his tools in it and everything, than someone who's there with a truck, with a DOT number, and lettering on the side saying what company it belongs to. There's a big difference between those two things.
Okay.
And I'll go back to it again. We're paying very high taxes, and it seems like the residential homeowner is being pushed aside, and we're paying very high taxes, and our town is looking more and more like Springfield than East Long Meadow used to look.
Well, to get down to the crux of the matter here, now, obviously, we've got a difference of opinion, because we've got one person saying that through public record, of the 60 complaints, they've all been answered in one form or another. You're saying they haven't, so just to move this along, if you have some properties that you are still questioning, if you don't mind either giving us the names of them or putting them in writing, we will be happy to follow up on, you know, with the building inspector and find out what he's done to satisfy that solution. And obviously, as we go along, if it's something where he's issued, you know, something saying that there's no change, or there's no violation, then obviously, as we've said numerous times, your next step is to go to the zoning board of appeals. So coming back before us numerous times isn't going to help the matter one bit.
I know that.
Okay.
I know that. But you are Mr. Halyer's boss.
Yes. So if you could get, once again, so if you could give us a list of these properties, then we'll be happy to check and see what he's done with them, and go proceed from there, and give you a report.
I've got all these papers, and I'll just send them to you.
That's fine.
But do you promise to be expedient in getting those replies to me?
Yes.
And I get a little tired of Mr. Halyer saying, "There's no violation," when I can take a picture--
But that's--
And show the violation.
But he's the zoning enforcement person, so if that's his decision, that there's no violation, then once again, you have to follow it through to the zoning board of appeals.
So I, as a citizen, even though I bring in a picture of the violation, Mr. Halyer's word is gold, even though he may be looking at it from his living room.
Well, I doubt that, but he is a zoning enforcement person, so he's the one that looks at it, and he's the person that we have to trust for the judgment.
Okay, now I'm going to ask another question of you, since you're putting me in the spot. We've got a small business thing, and that's fine. But they have to obey the law. And there's, the small businessmen have business hours.
Depending on the business, I suppose.
Yeah, it's 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 in the evening, five days a week.
Okay.
It's in the bylaws of East Long Meadow.
Okay.
And Mr. Halyer has refused to check and see if they are in violation or not in violation, because he's trying to say it's private property. And I've checked with several lawyers--
Well, we--
And, no, 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 no. Don't interrupt me. I haven't finished a sentence yet. I've checked with several lawyers. It's a business from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You've assigned that task to him to do. He's refused to do it. I listened to your lawyer once, and he mumbled from behind, and I went to that tape, and I could not understand one word he said.
Well, I could, and he said that he cannot go on private property. And I believe the Board heard that also, so--
Through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Not to interrupt your train of thought on Mr. Turner, but Mr. Rusio has offered a review type of a board. Are you willing to participate in that?
I'm willing to participate, but I don't see any need to change the law. I don't think this town should look like Ludlow or Springfield. I think we have some residential property, and it should be treated as residential property. And I think the Board also should check on people who have farming zones, and they're being taxed for farming, and they're not farming in that land. If you're going to have a farm and be zoned farm zone, you have to grow something there. You have to sell things that you grow there.
Well, there's land in town I know, because I know there's some on Pease Road that is zoned farmland that has not been a farm for decades. Now, the problem obviously with those is when you're zoned a farm, you get a tax break on your property taxes.
That's right.
You don't? Sure, but--
Ralph Page, I'm on the planning board. There's two different types of farms that you'd be talking about. What you're discussing is under 61A, which is through the assessor's office. Not all farms receive a tax break. You have to go under 61A.
Okay.
They go out to your property, they assess it. If you have two acres or more, you can do agricultural work on the farm. Call yourself a farm, you have to produce X amount of income a year, and show the assessor's office that you're producing it to call yourself a farm. But it doesn't mean that you get a tax break. And further, we do not have an agricultural zone. You can do farming in any zone, whether it be business, industrial garden park, or residential.
But we have properties that are zoned farm.
We do have, Meadowbrook Farms is under 61A, and a lot of his property. We have a place down on Pease Road that is actually a tree farm. They actually submit through the state a tree harvesting program, and it's done about once every 15 years. They harvest the trees. I mean, there's multiple farms like that. There's agricultural farms that just raise chickens and sell the eggs. We do have quite a few farms in town that are actually registered through the assessor's agency.
Through the chair, so if we have a farm, and it's not getting a tax break, it could still be labeled as a farm, it just wouldn't be under the 61A?
Exactly.
Okay.
So they would be paying the same taxes as--
Yeah. Same tax rate, yeah.
All right, so basically, where we stand is, is I don't want to, I know we have five-minute limits here in theory. If you'd like to list those properties, we'll get, I'll get together with Dan, find out what the disposition of those properties is, and we will get back to you on those. And that should, in theory, solve the situation.
Do you want to set the timer?
As long as I drive down the street and I don't see a five-ton truck parked there.
Well, I can't prevent that, so--
No, but he can. That's his job, and he has to follow up with it. And he hasn't followed up.
Well, that's, we're in a different opinion on that, because--
Well, I've got the pictures.
Well, one person's saying that all these have been addressed. I realize you have pictures, and that's wonderful, but I'm just saying, it's been addressed by him according to one person, which is public record, and it's not been addressed according to you, so I don't know if I go from, you know, if it's public record--
That's kind of, that's kind of hard to tell.
What, that it's, that you can look at public record and find out that 60 properties have been handled one way or another?
Yeah, I don't think they have been.
Well, then, it's public record, so feel free to look it up.
I guess I'll go home and count how many replies I've got from him.
Okay.
And the ratio's still here?
Twelve.
It sounds like--
No, 20, out of 60.
You know, through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
I got to say, I've been in the court with Mr. Halyer four times, and we're fighting kind of a downhill battle with the court system, because the last time I went there, which is embarrassing for us, the magistrate asked me who I was, and I told her I was a selectman from East Long Meadow. So she told me to come up, and she said, "I want to ask you one thing, Mr. Gorman. When are you going to stop this vigilante stuff that's going on in East Long Meadow? Do you see my court system out here? I can't be put up with this petty stuff that you're coming here with." That's why she tells us, which Mr. Rusio was there the last time, to go and see if you can't settle the situation.
Mediate, yeah.
So, but, and, don't interrupt me now.
I'm sorry.
And as far as him saying that Dan Halyer doesn't go out, well, I must be looking out the same picture window at his house that he is, because I've been out with him several times looking at these, and we find no violation. I don't know what time of day you're going, but we can't spend all day, he got other things to do besides go and look at violations. But as we go around in the morning, we get up 6:30 sometimes to catch people, and people, we can't find these trucks that you were talking about. And some of the, some of the things that you turn in, you have to be going on people's private property to get pictures of these things, which is against the law.
No, I have not--
Because we took those pictures, love, don't interrupt me. When we go out and look at the pictures you gave us and look at those, there is no way you can see these people's truck without either going around on their property or climbing up over the fence, which we can't do.
I have never gone on anyone's private property. I've never gotten out of my car. I just have a good camera, and when you go to a place, if you've got something this big, you can blow it up to be that big, just like the police have those things in their car where they can check your tag on your number plate.
And I--
I can look at something from 100 feet away and take a picture. I can go down a CVS, put my little tag in there, and blow that thing up so you can read the number plate.
And I also, Mr. Turner, have a letter from someone that is thinking of suing you for what you did to him, because his--
No, that, yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you, it's a disgruntled person, that you're taking pictures of his property when the guy is home trying to look at his sick mother.
But you know, I, through the chair, I just think it would, I think Mr. Rusio brought up a good point of starting this review process of the bylaw, and so that there is an understanding exactly what it is. Because I've always said that if there's a problem with the bylaw, and we're opposed to it, then perhaps it needs to be addressed. Right now, it's on the books. Mr. Turner is going and finding these places, so we need to make sure that it's, everything is being addressed at this point. So maybe the first thing is, perhaps you and Mr., since there is a difference in what you're saying, you know, Mr. Rusio, if he's willing to chat with you on--
I'd be more than happy to, but I'll be perfectly honest with you. I think Mr. Turner has a vengeance against Dan Halyer, and just, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand that. I'm going to be perfectly blunt. All of his comments from day one have been against Dan Halyer, and I really feel that there's something between that situation. So I wish he would stop wasting our time and trying to prove that point. And if it's a matter of the bylaw that we need to upgrade because of modern times, then we should do so, instead of wasting our time. And the point of order is that, I had five minutes. He's taken now almost 20. So I think we need to cut some ties here and get some resemblance of a meeting.
Well, as I've said numerous times, the solution to the immediate problem is, make a list of the properties you're concerned about, get them to us, we'll talk to Dan, we'll get you a response on what's been done, or what, well, what's been done in regard to these problems.
I do resent what the gentleman said, because everything that I've brought in here is in Mr. Halyer's venue of his job--
Right, and he's--
So if I'm, if I'm only going, and speaking about Mr. Halyer, who else am I going to go to?
Well, it is his job, I realize that, but--
Who else am I going to go to?
But--
Am I going to go to the chief of police?
No. And I don't need sarcasm, please, because you've already exceeded your time limit by 15 minutes, so in this case, if you would like to list the properties, we'll be happy to review them and go back over them. I realize it's Mr. Halyer's job, it's part of his job. He has a full day, as it is, including this, and what we have to realize is, if we find out that he's made judgments on these, you have to accept that and take the next step. You can't keep coming in with the same properties, with the same pictures, if they've already been identified and handled.
You know, I'm trying to point out to you that his judgment was, his decision was incorrect.
Well, that's, that's exact--
So do I know that it's going to cost me $100 to go to the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, okay.
Yes, I know that. And I'm willing to pay $100 to go to the zoning board of appeals.
That's fine. But we will, get us a list of those, and we will get the responses for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll shake your hand, Paul.
That's okay. Our 6:15 appointment is John Comerford.
He's right over here.
If you're any closer--
I know, I'm not very tall.
Especially sitting down. Come on up.
Hi, how are you? Yeah, I know, I know. Is it bright enough for you? I saw you, John, you were sitting high this way. Yeah. Nothing wrong with that, is that?
All right, how are you tonight?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Did he forget his glasses?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, probably.
Oh, well.
All righty.
I won't take 20 minutes, I promise.
Okay, thank you. You'll get us back on track.
I'll try, I'll try, I'll try. Tell me when to begin.
All right, well, first, I'd like to say, I'd like to thank you for doing such a fine job with our, with our veterans. I know your outreach has grown tremendously, tell by, that's one of the few items in the budget that we like to see grow, because that means you're reaching more veterans.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
No problem. So you would like to talk to us about the, what is it, the Purple Heart?
Community.
Community, okay.
Essentially, I was contacted by a couple of people, one with, I'm going to say the VFW locally, 875, and they said, "Would you help us present to East Long Meadow a request to make East Long Meadow a Purple Heart community?" Be happy to. So they faxed me over the information that I needed, and I got it to your office, to the Selectmen's Office. And as I understand it, the Selectmen's Office prepared a proclamation based on what I had provided, request or suggesting that East Long Meadow join a number of communities in Massachusetts and be, designate the East Long Meadow as a Purple Heart community. And that can be designated if only one person in the town has been in receipt of the Purple
I know your, your outreach has grown tremendously, tell by the, that's one of the few items in the budget that we like to see grow, because that means you're reaching more veterans.
Thank you, appreciate that.
No problem. So you would like to talk to us about the, what is it, the Purple Heart?
Community.
Community, okay.
Essentially, I was contacted by a couple of people, one with, I'm gonna say the VFW locally, eight-seventy-five. And they said, "Would you help us present to East Long Meadow a request to make East Long Meadow a Purple Heart community? Be happy to." So they faxed me over the information that I needed, and I got it to your office, to the selectmen's office. And as I understand it, the selectmen's office prepared a proclamation based on what I had provided. Request or suggesting that East Long Meadow join a number of communities in Massachusetts and be, designate the, East Long Meadow as a Purple Heart community. And that can be designated if only one person in the town has been in receipt of the Purple Heart. Across the country, there are about seven-hundred-and-fifty communities that have been designated as a Purple Heart community. I'd like to see East Long Meadow join the fray. Long Meadow did this fairly recently, and I think that, you know, there are, I don't, I'm not certain of the number of Purple Heart recipients are in East Long Meadow, but I know there are plenty, and, and all you need is one. Get a, approve this proclamation if you would.
Is there any discussion from the?
So does that one person need to fill out any paperwork, or is it something that the board just does?
The, the board decides that we are gonna be a Purple Heart community, and at some point, once, once it's designated, the town would be presented with a plaque. You've probably seen them in other towns, this is, for instance, in Ware. You drive into Ware, and it'll say, "This is a Purple Heart community." Other than the, other than the, the fact that it's appreciated by the veterans, you don't really get anything in, in return, other than the fact that they've, they've earned the Purple Heart.
Absolutely.
And we should, we should honor them by putting this on, on the roadways.
Okay, and I noticed, and, and I feel awful that I was remiss in this, but, because I know if you've ever been at the Memorial Day services, I've spoken to my father and my uncle and my other relatives in the service, and I did not know that August seventh was, was the National Purple Heart Day, yes.
Exactly.
Very glad that, that I do know that now, and I don't know, is there any other discussion from the board? You're, you're a veteran.
Yeah. What, what day would that be, Purple Heart Day?
August seventh.
August seventh.
Every year.
Every year.
Every year, yeah.
And once you folks make the decision to go, to approve it as a Purple Heart community, as I said, you'll be presented with a plaque at some point in time, you know.
And I know, you know, you know the numbers more than I do, I guarantee you, we've had.
Oh.
Purple Heart recipients in town, and even if you don't wanna go back to Wilworth, or any farther, you just go back, go back as far, you don't have to go back as far as Mark Ecker.
Exactly, exactly. You know, I go to.
Lost both legs.
I go to the senior center every Tuesday, and there's at least one Purple Heart license plate. I have no idea who it belongs to, but I wish I knew, because I'd like to shake his hand.
Yep, definitely.
Can I make that motion, sir?
Well, yeah, I guess.
I'll make a motion that East Long Meadow become a Purple Heart town.
No, sir, move.
Accept the petition. Sir?
I moved it, he seconded it.
Uh-huh, so you say all in favor?
All in favor, well, you made the motion, so.
Oh, well, all in favor.
All right.
Thank you very, very much, that's a big deal.
Thank you, thank you, guys, for your work.
Yep, John.
John, when are your hours down for the?
Well, I'm here about nine-thirty every, every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday, though, senior.
Yep, yep, and I leave about eleven-thirty quarter to twelve, because I end up going to Wales, you know.
We have to go to a different venue.
Yeah.
For that, I know what you, I know where you're going.
Oh, okay.
We'll talk.
Okay, we'll talk. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, gentlemen, thank you. Our next appointment is with members of the recreation committee.
Hey, Paul.
How you doing? How are you?
We're gonna get smaller tables and longer arms, one of them.
Nice to see you, too.
Read you for a check.
We already had that discussion.
All right.
I do have letters, I have four of them. I was gonna read this out loud, okay? Lots of paperwork. So, I'll read this into record. Dear Board of Selectmen and Select People, the goal of the Recreation Commission during the open meeting is to outline the roles and responsibilities of the commission. It's our opinion that the establishment of the Recreation Commission dates back to the March fifth, nineteen-sixty annual town meeting, and was set up under provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section five, and through twenty-five, and Chapter forty-five, Section fourteen. These responsibilities were further expanded at a special town meeting on April seventeenth, nineteen-sixty-seven. This provides clarity as to who or whom is responsible for maintaining, supervising, and coordinating recreational programs within the town of East Long Meadow. We ask the Board of Selectmen to support the volunteer Recreation Commission, appointed by the Board of Selectmen, to do the duties and responsibilities that were bestowed by the voters of East Long Meadow. And we appreciate your time and consideration for this meeting today.
Thank you.
One of the points I'd like to make is, there's an outline of.
An organizational chart?
We got it. We got them all. Here is the Town of East Long Meadow general bylaws. And you'll note on page, I just printed out the copies of the pages of where it was relevant, I could give you. For compliance reasons, I do have this here in full. And please note on page sixty-three, the Recreation Commission is established by vote on Town of March fifth, nineteen-sixty, and accepting Chapter forty, Section five through twenty-five of General Laws as amended. Nine members served terms of three years by appointment. That amendment to the nine members was done by that nineteen-sixty-seven meeting, special town meeting, on April seventeenth, nineteen-sixty-seven. And within these bylaws, there's a list of the laws that have been upstanding since this was amended since two thousand and thirteen. You'll see, I check mark three, five, sixty, and that's the establishment of the Recreation Commission. So, with that said, Chapter forty-five, Section fourteen, I will, I will read a little highlight here, and then I'll also pass that out. As you can see, we're, we're in the business of killing trees tonight. The powers conferred by this section that shall be exercised by the Board of Park Commissioners, or by the School Committee, or by the Planning Board, or by Playground or Recreation Commission, appointed by the mayor in a city, or by the selectman or town moderator in a town, or elected by the voters of the town at a town meeting. All right? So that's the formation of the Recreation Commission. The further move ahead, in the nineteen-sixty-seven, April seventeenth special town meeting, it was then clarified, because in nineteen-sixty, we had three members of this Recreation Commission. It was then voted to expand it to nine. And the, the point I wanna make, and I have this all here for you, but I'll save shuffle on paper. The purpose of said commission as being to establish, maintain, supervise, and coordinate recreational programs within the town to authorize said commission to engage a professional coordinator. The object of this is that we have boards, and this, the formation of this board was to help the town work together with the Board of Select People and the Selectmen. So day-to-day activities, such as hiring not the program coordinator, all right? Because we worked together in the past hiring of our new, of our current program coordinator. But when we're talking about within the department itself, those hiring processes should go through the commission itself. And that's why I wanted to emphasize the purpose of said commission as being to establish, maintain, supervise, and coordinate recreational programs within the town to authorize said commission to engage a professional coordinator. And I just wanted to bring this in public form. This is not to be combative. This is to have a working relationship together, in the form of government that we have. We are a volunteer, hundred percent volunteer board, that gives up our Saturdays to walk around Heritage Park, to review what's going on there. Our Saturday mornings to, to sit down with other sports boards. Our, our nights, just like you guys do. So we just wanna be recognized for the board that we are. And work with our liaison, which right now is Selectman Gorman.
And I know you've answered some questions, we had some questions last time we were together about the, about the formation and the time, timetable and things like that, so.
I just have a, sort of a chair, a quick question. Attorney Donnie Hew is talking about, he had some questions, is that all of the answers in, within that?
I believe so, but he's right here.
Okay, I think.
You should always be careful when you walk in. You should always be careful when you walk in, especially if we're all staring at you.
I didn't see the gun, Sean, I thought I was.
No, no. No, this is East Long Meadow.
I know, you hit him as soon as he comes in, but maybe he can review it and, with the additional information. I think it should answer it, but just to be sure.
We're gonna give you a packet, the, the Recreation Commission has gone through the history of, you know, back to nineteen-sixty, and they do have the bylaws and the changes and the additions for, to show that, you know, what they can do, and we'll be happy to give that to you. They're, they're just here tonight to show us, present that to us, as far as, you know, that they, that Tom and whoever else has done the research going back to nineteen-sixty, you know, to, because I know we had some questions when we were in a while, you know, was it a few meetings ago regarding?
In response, in response to that meeting, I did speak with the town clerk, I had him research the history of the Recreation Department. You know, you may remember there was the issue about Section E of, I think it was Chapter four, eighty of Chapter forty, about whether it was accepted or not. And the clerk determined that it was not. So that the jurisdiction respect to the Recreation Commission is based on a nineteen-sixty town meeting vote and a nineteen-sixty-seven town meeting vote.
That's correct.
Those two votes basically make the, one, they establish a three-member Recreation Commission back in nineteen-sixty, and then, ought to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, but that commission was to be members of, I guess, it seems like an existing association for recreation that existed in the community at that time, that was not part of, the municipal government was more like a citizens group that was formed. And then in sixty-seven, there was a vote to expand the board to nine members. The original, the three that were there, and then six more, six more appointed for terms of three years each. And giving to the commission the authority to determine what recreation programs, baseball, football, hockey, the likes, were appropriate for the community, establish a temporary rec center, or community center, and I forget the entity that existed at that time that the town meeting directed in to do. The nine members were subject to the appointment of the Board of Selectmen. They were authorized to appoint, they, being the Recreation Commission, were authorized to appoint staff and supervisors that they felt were appropriate. But the vote also required that all appropriations or expenditures be approved by warrants signed by the Board of Selectmen. So in effect, what I think happened over the years was, although the commission was charged with the ability to run the day-to-day operations, they still required the assent or approval of the Board of Selectmen in the sense that any money they were going to expend out of an appropriation made by town meeting had to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So I, I think, I don't know this, because I wasn't here back then, I, I look like I was, but I wasn't. I, I think what happened is the Board of Recreation, which they have deferred to the board with respect to actions that they wanted to take. They said, "Here's what we're gonna do, here's what we want to spend money for, will you approve the warrants?" And in that sense, and that may have, may have morphed into the Selectmen having more direct control over the Recreation Park, and then the vote actually intended to that.
So, so in a sense, so we've sort of defined, now we have a definition of the, the responsibilities and the, I don't wanna use the word power, but you know what I mean, the, the abilities that the board has in their, you know, practicing. Thank you. You know, in the handling of their affairs, so at least we have it set now, and we can move forward, and we know who can do what.
With that said, I would, I would like to move up the, the vote, if that all possible, of the additional hours.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna, I was thinking about that, because I know that was next on the agenda, and I had talked to, you know, that's, that's an interesting animal, so to speak, because I spoke to appropriations, and obviously it fits in the budget this year. So what we had to, and, and I'm gonna may turn to you for this, because we had discussed this. In theory, it's not a problem this year, but the employee has to realize that when the new budgets come out, depending on, on budget restrictions, it may have to go back down to a nineteen-hour position July first, and we had, we had had some discussions about that, and I think we, we deem that as long as the employee understands it, and then.
It really is, it's really as long as the boards understand
No.
that it's a nineteen-hour position if they intend to create, but what you're doing, you have an approved nineteen-hour position.
Right.
You're now saying, "We need a thirty-five-hour position." You're creating a new position of thirty-five hours, which is going to be filled by someone, apparently maybe this nineteen-hour person, maybe not, but anyway. So the new thirty-five-hour position is created, there's money in the budget to fund it. The nineteen-hour position still exists, but it's unfunded, and it's gonna remain unfilled unless and until there's an additional appropriation. Come the budgeting process in May, at the town meeting, if the appropriations committee doesn't recommend, or they do recommend, and town meeting votes not to appropriate money for a thirty-five-hour position, if they appropriate for a nineteen, then you have it, and can hire a nineteen-hour position, and this person could apply for it, or move down into it if they chose to. And if, or, if they don't approve the money for any position, that position just disappears.
I believe Selectman Thorpe just sort of answered, asked a question that I was asking, is if it goes back down to a nineteen-hour position, which is in effect a different position, the current person, does the current person have to apply for it, does it have to go out?
There, and this is where I defer to your labor council, because that person has more intimate knowledge of these contracts than I do. But generally, the labor contracts have a rifting provision, which means that if there's a reduction in force, either for whatever reason in, in this makeup of the staff, that existing employees have the right to bump into that position if they're most senior and qualified for that position, if they choose to. So there may be a procedure in place in a collective bargaining agreement that allows that employee to move back into that nineteen-hour position.
Yes.
The question that I would have is with regards to the person becoming a full-time person and the union, and then what happens when it, if it, would it still have to go through the union for riffing purposes?
Is the nineteen-hour position a union position?
It is.
So it is currently?
It is, right, but the benefits, et cetera.
Yeah.
It's the employee's.
I just think he's been.
It's the employee's choice if they want to, if their position is done away with, whether they wanna use their rights under the contract to move into another available position that may exist.
Okay.
In-house move, right?
Yeah.
In-house move, that would be considered in-house, that's what Selectman Gorman was asking.
Right, that would be an in-house position, I believe. Because you're moving from a full-time position to a vacant, not a part-time position that the department wants to fill. So you could move into that position, although you do take less benefits. Economically, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to do, they probably would be better off, oh, I don't know this, to go on unemployment.
We created a position that go to thirty-five hours, and that's what he's saying. Do we have to re-interview? Because you're creating a new position.
Did you catch that?
If we're. We created a new position, that we go to thirty-five hours, you said we're creating a new position.
Right.
Basically, do we have to go through an interviewing process all over again?
We have to go through a hiring process.
Because we're actually getting a new job.
You would post it internally first, I believe, and if there are no internal candidates, because it's, it's a union position, so if there are no internal candidates, then you would go outside and look for positions. so if there are no internal candidates, then you would go outside and look for positions.
One point I want to bring up is if that working number for those 35 hours is within the current budget that's currently constituted for this past year, and we have that same number moving forward, or a 1% increase as projected, then we could settle it now that we have that 35-hour position.
But what, but what Attorney Donahue was saying, I got it, it just took me a second. What Attorney Donahue is saying is by making, you can't make a 19-hour position a 35-hour position. You have to create a new 35-hour position, which means you have to go out to hire for that position again. We have someone in the 19-hour position now. But from what I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, in order to create a 35-hour position, it's not just adding 16 hours to the existing, is existing position. It's starting a whole, forming a whole new position, which means a whole new hiring process.
But for this year at this time?
It, I don't think it matters. You can't arbitrar, you know, you can't just do it this year. Okay.
If a new position would be created, it would be posted. Internal candidates would be taken first, I believe, under the contract, but I defer again to Labor Council. And then if there were no internal candidates who would be qualified or determined to be the best candidates for that position, then you would seek external candidates from the outside.
And has the 19-hour person started yet?
Starts up, right.
Okay. This doesn't make things any easier.
No, it doesn't.
Because we don't know if, we don't know if someone else will apply for the job from within.
I can say that the internal employee hasn't been paying much attention to this and would be someone who would apply for that 35-hour position.
But, but I guess what I'm saying is if someone else from Town Hall applied for that position, what would be the qualifications?
To be determined who is the most qualified.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
We determine.
Okay, so we're back to square one. Okay. Is that what you're, is all this process what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it possible that we can speak with Labor Council also to have them weigh in as well? So that, just to make sure we're doing everything correct. Dot our i's and cross our t's, so that we're not back here.
Are they coming tonight by any chance? Because I hate to put this off any far, any longer. I mean, I hate to put Attorney Donahue on the spot, but are you 99% confident about this? I mean, I know you told us to talk to Labor Council, but, you know.
The only thing that I'm not really sure about is what the rifting language in the contract is and how that applies. But with respect to the existing 19-hour position and the desire to have a 35-hour position, yes. I'm confident that's a proper.
Okay, but the only problem, the only situation with the rifting contract is going back to 19 hours, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that wouldn't, if we, if we were, if we just, if we decided to create the 35-hour position today and then go in the process of hiring for it, then that, we don't have to worry about the rifting process till July 1st or thereabouts?
Correct.
So we can get that question answered after the fact?
It may never happen.
Right, right. Right, we're in a perfect world, we'll get the budget passed and this will just move, go on. All right. Any other questions from the board? In that case, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
First you gotta ask us to change our agenda.
Why's that?
I think.
You're going out.
We have to move forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's also 5B. Is it not?
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, then let's see, we're moving up to... What number was it? Oh, okay, number 34, okay. Is it the mood of the board to go out of order and pick on 34 now?
Yep.
All in favor? All right, all right. You're welcome. I'd like to make a motion to approve a 35-hour position for the Rec. Department and allow our Rec. Director to go through the process of, of, to go through again the process of hiring a candidate for this position. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Any discussion?
Not just the Rec. Director, but the, your board will be interviewing. Okay, so I would make a motion to amend the, amend the motion to say that the Rec. Department and the Recreation Board will interview.
Right.
And hire a 35.
Okay. I was just going as far as the placing the ad and something, but I understand that you guys will be doing the.
I'm just being complete, that's all.
All right.
So I, so I've made a motion.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the Recreation Commission in the interviewing process for said employee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now, vote on the regular motion. Motion admitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you. Last point on 5B was appointment of the Recreation.
Yes, you had a candidate, right?
Yeah, I think we have two.
How many appointments do you have?
We need one and a half right now.
Now you sound like him.
Now, do we have the resumes? I didn't see that in the packet.
They should have been.
Yeah, they are.
Chairman, you have, you have one resume.
Okay.
You have one resume?
Just the, just the one, I'm not aware.
We've had two people interested, but one resume.
Okay, so only one, only one provided.
I'm not aware of any others.
Do you have it with, with?
No, we did not submit a resume. We, we asked that they come forward to you.
Okay, so. Okay.
Yeah, I know it's in here because.
I didn't see it. Did you see it, the resume?
Didn't, but.
What are you feeling about it?
Fantastic, he's been in our, he's been in our public forum.
Okay.
Been there.
Here we go.
Both of you feeling the same way?
And he, based on his, his work experience, he's, he's dealt with people, which obviously is important.
Oh, I did see this, I told your story, I'm sorry.
You know what I mean? Especially us, no, I'm just. But, yes. Hey, hey, hey. But if you folks are in favor of this gentleman, then I, you know, I have no problem. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Yeah, he came, they came with their recommendations, so they're going to work on themselves.
Absolutely.
In that case, I would like to make a motion to approve Kevin McLaughlin as a member of the Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your clarification.
We're going to have to harvest that tree farm pretty soon.
All right, our next appointment is our town clerk, Treasurer Collector.
Why are you talking?
Okay, you are hearing a couple items.
Yes.
The first is the dreaded water shut-off program.
Yes. Just wanted to.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Quick update on that. The program finished last Thursday. Was a pretty successful in two aspects this year. We were able to get $100,000 collected. It goes right into the water sewer fund, enterprise fund. And we only had to shut off one house.
Oh, wow, that's good.
There was a few houses that were vacant that we shut off. And worked with the Board of Health and Selectman Gorman to work in that one house on Maple Shade Avenue and to make arrangements for the family to come in.
Okay.
To set something up, so.
Great.
So it was positive.
Next item is the Clerk's Office part-time position.
Yes. We got, again, to backfill from a recent retirement where we had an employee take that position. The part-time position is open. Last, last week, the internal job posting ended, there was no candidates. So now what I like to do is, what I did in the past for this job is for maybe 10 days, put it, I have two weeks in the reminder. And here's the article I put in the last time for the, just Employment Opportunity for Part-Time Ministerial.
Okay.
And like to have all the applicants get things into me by October 27th.
Okay.
Which is.
Monday.
A week from Monday, the town meeting.
Well, yeah, especially, yeah.
And should have a, and as, last time there was dozens of applicants.
My understanding is there was one internal candidate that applied. Did you not receive, hmm, I don't want to put it out there.
Okay, I think the lady you're referring to was Donna Byler.
Yeah, I wasn't going to put her name out there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry about that. Sorry, I know you. She was not part of the union, so she wasn't able to, per the internal posting procedures, wasn't able to apply.
Okay.
Okay. I, I didn't understand. So you have to be part of the union, so, so to be considered an internal. So we can have somebody that's been working here for years, not part of the union? This person wasn't here for years.
Right.
But not part of the union and they can't be considered for that position?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to allow the town clerk to advertise the position in question for a period of two weeks, with the deadline being October 27th for response.
Sold him.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I really would like to find out a little bit more about that. Apparently you guys are union people, so you know a little more.
Would you know?
I'd like to look into that.
If you, if you want to apply for an internal job, if you, if you're, do you have to be a union employee to be an internal, to apply for, be considered an internal employee for applying for a job?
Under the union contract, employees in the bargaining group are given first opportunity to apply for openings with any, any position within the union.
Okay.
So anyone else who's employed by the town who's not part of that union is considered a non-internal candidate for that position.
So this person in question would have to apply now with the, okay, thank you.
If they were not a member of the union and they are a town employee and want the position, yes, they would apply now.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that.
In light of that, all in favor, no, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then the update on the taxpayer's betterment status.
Yes, we have a, this situation is, looks like a work in progress still. It's, it involves a taxpayer, his sewer betterment. It's been going on for a number of years. He's questioned the second part of his betterment. He had no problem with the first part, the frontage of his house. The second part is, again, I've never driven out to the property, so I don't know, you know, what it looks like on the right-hand side, but he felt that he didn't, shouldn't be paying all the sewer betterment costs of the second part of the frontage. And evidently, he's talked to the DPW, who was, they, they said no to his request that he had ample, he had time to, I think you probably know, it's come up a little bit in the past. And, you know, again, I'm looking at it as a, from a collective, collection standpoint, that some interest has accumulated. And he still is negotiating, and while he's been negotiating, there's some interest that has accumulated on his sewer betterment. And I, under D.R. and Master, and I'm only allowed to waive $15. Anything over $15, I have to talk to the Board of Selectmen about to get their approval.
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
So are you asking for it to be waived, or are you asking for a stay? Meaning to push it off until the decision has been made?
Yeah, probably a stay, and at that point, when a decision is made, then. I, it's, I, I don't know if it's to be waived or it's just in question. It's been in negotiations, it's been festering for years. And again, it's, it's a unique case, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't know, it's something like this has never happened before, and I, and I just don't, I just want to make sure I handle it the right way.
Okay.
That's all.
We may want to bounce this off Town Council.
Okay.
And through the chair, please.
Sure.
Why does he think he doesn't owe it? What's the philosophy behind it? Because he's gone to DPW already, if I heard you correctly.
Yes.
And DPW has said no.
Right.
So who's doing the negotiations at this point?
He's gone to state legislators and they want to keep it at the local level. They don't want to be involved with any decisions making.
And so they're bringing it back here, so it goes back to DPW?
Yeah, now he's got somebody representing him, and he's still trying to, you know, to get it waived. In the meantime, I'm telling him to pay, you know, you don't, don't get behind, pay. We can always refund you. I just, you know, again, maybe it's more information, it's a work in progress. It's something that's, that's, that's out there that he feels strongly, he doesn't want to, he, he shouldn't have to pay that second part of the betterment. I mean, it's up, that's up to me, it's not my expertise. The DPW already said no.
But he owns the property. I'm just trying to wrap my arms around it. He owns the property, so then, wouldn't he own the ta, all the taxes too? Maybe the, maybe it should go to council.
He's paid his taxes.
Yeah.
He's paid all his real estate taxes. He just had, he had a sewer betterment, actually, Dean, 22, 29.
So it's the interest.
It's like almost $37,000 worth of sewer betterment, and he's questioning part of it. And he's paid all his real estate taxes up to date. It's just, and, you know, as he paid them, he incurred interest, I'm trying to.
Understand, how long ago was the betterment assessed?
Six years ago.
Okay.
Can we discuss this with you?
I, I'm not.
Is that a no?
I'm not sure of the specific situation. I don't know what the, from this, I don't have any clue what's going on.
Can we defer him?
Yeah, why don't we defer this and have you talk to Town Council?
Okay.
And, and give him the full story and then.
I can give you a little input on it. Do you want to hear it? Secondly, I don't think you have the authority to waive or suspend betterment.
Well, we're not waiving or suspending the betterment, it's just the interest.
I don't think you have the authority to do that either.
Oh, okay. In that case, I think I should have, you two should talk at some point, and then we'll, we'll take this up once we, once we get a determination of whether we can or not, so.
It's a unique situation, and I just want to come before you to do the right thing.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. I, I should, two other really quick things.
Hopefully very quick, because we got.
Real fast. So the refunding analysis, we want to get going on that for this year to refinance some old bonds. Could net us $493,000 in budgetary savings over a, over a 10-year period.
Okay.
And also, we had a successful rabies vaccination. Got some dogs licensed and stuff this, to our period this Saturday, of course. Which, which always works out.
All right, great, thank you, Tom.
Could I please ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
The clerk, he's mentioning to the board the potential savings on bonding, which is a terrific thing for the town. But I just want to bring this up, and certainly the board's aware of the tight timeline of everything with the last time that we had with the bonding. So this is a follow-up question for the clerk, if he has any kind of an idea of when that's going to happen, because the board's schedule is going to be a little bit off, especially as we get more towards the holidays. So if he has a quick turnaround, if he has any idea, the sooner the better. I would just ask the clerk to notify me, and then I can notify the board.
Okay. We leave without Bon Council and the financial advisor this week. We can, what we can do is set up a timeline and a schedule on what the borrowing schedule looks like.
Sounds like plan.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Our next item at 7 o'clock is a hearing. The Italian-American War Veterans of the United States, Sister Lombardi, Post 64, 213 Vineland Avenue, has applied, has applied for a change of manager from Dennis Lucy to Ronald Zimmerman, an application for a new substitute manager from Felice Di Michele to Darryl Grant. And I would like to ask all the gentlemen involved to come forward, in case we need more chairs. No, you got to read, you got to read the whole hearing. Nice to meet you, dear.
Hi.
Hi.
Darryl Grant. Hi, nice to meet you, Darryl.
How about you?
Good.
How are you?
Trying to move over a little bit. Stretch. Hi. Nice to meet you.
I'm a little biased here. I'm a little biased here. My dad was a proud member of the I can't pass.
I know it. I remember him.
If the clerk could read, yes, if the clerk could read the hearing notice into record. We are now, obviously, in a hearing.
Under Chapter 138, Section 15 of the General Laws that Pride Store LLC
Nope, that's not the right one.
Okay. It's the same thing you just read, then. Okay, notices hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that the Italian-American War Veterans of the United States, Sisto Lombardi Post 64, 213 Vineland Avenue, Islam Meadow, has applied for a change of manager from Dennis Lucy to Ronald Zimmerman. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on this application on Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Hearing Room at the Islam Meadow Town Hall, Islam Meadow, Massachusetts. Signed, Paul Federici, Chairman William Gorman, Angela Thorpe, Board of Selectmen, acting as licensing authority.
Right off the bat, Nick, I don't know if it matters, but I noticed the substitute manager's not listed on the hearing notice. Does that matter?
No, we have not listed it before.
Okay, great. Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
Good, how are you?
So obviously, this is fairly simple. You're changing managers and substitute managers. So if you want to introduce yourselves for the record here.
I'm Dennis Lucy. I'm the current manager.
Okay.
I'm Ross Zimmerman, applying for manager.
Excuse me, Darryl Grant, substitute manager.
Okay.
Applying, I'm a substitute manager.
Okay. I assume, I'm trying to think of what your, where you would have to, you know, serve safe, et cetera, everyone certified.
I just came from my
Wonderful. Wonderful. Just like you're asking, have you been in the business before? I know it's a, I know it's a basically social club, so I wouldn't expect you to, you know, have this.
Somewhat years ago.
Okay. All right. Is, are there any questions from the board?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of managers from Dennis Lucy to Ronald Zimmerman, first of all.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve substitute manager change from Felice Di Michele to Darryl Grant.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rick, that's it. You guys are all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's true. That's true. Well. I won't seal your thunder again. Our next, our next hearing involves the Pride Stores. Okay, now, the clerk
Okay. Revised notice, under Chapter 138, Section 15 of the General Laws that Pride Stores LLC, 13 North Main Street, Islam Meadow, Mass., Roberta Bolak, member, and Marcia Delmonte, member, has applied for an extension of their Sunday opening times, 10:00 AM, to sell alcoholic beverages as follows by the A B C C, and also to extend the hours of operation on Sunday until 8:00 PM to sell alcoholic beverages. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on this application on Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, at 7:15 PM in the Town Hall Hearing Room at the Islam Meadow Town Hall, Islam Meadow, Mass. Paul Federici, Chairman William Gorman, William R. Gorman, Angela Thorpe, Board of Selectmen as, acting as the licensing authority.
Thank you. How are you, Jim?
How are yourself?
Good, thanks. So you're coming here to extend, right now you're 12 to 6, I believe, right?
That's correct.
And you want to go 10 to 8?
We are. I guess it's a twofold request. First being the change of the law.
Okay, yeah.
Effective October 23rd, we'd be moving it from, excuse me, 12 noon to 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
Effective the 23rd, the first Sunday, being the 26th.
Okay.
And while we are applying to that, we are also asking for the board's consideration to extend the Sunday night, which is currently at 6 o'clock
Mm-hmm.
To 8:00 PM.
Okay.
And there still would be some period of time every day of the week in which Pride does not sell beer and wine, but we are just asking to extend the offer on a Sunday.
On the Sundays, okay. Is there any, any discussion from the board or any questions?
Yeah, I believe it was a few months ago that we did, we did a compromise with the countryside store.
Right.
And they were, I just don't remember what time they opened.
Well, they wanted to be, stay open until 10 o'clock at night on Sunday.
We did it to 8.
We gave them the 8.
Okay, I'm good. All right, thank you for that clarification.
And obviously, the 10 o'clock is something relatively new. It's the laws, they're, the blue laws are going away eventually.
Yeah, I think so. The Connecticut can tell, so maybe.
Yeah, okay. Any, any further questions or considerations?
Seeing that, that's what we've done in the past.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, we'll take this in, I guess, twofold. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, oh, I'm sorry. Since this is a hearing, is there anyone else in here that would like to comment on this, on this proposal? Seeing, seeing no one? Is that, yeah, so we'll close the hearing. And I'd like to make a motion first to approve the extension of the opening, opening time to sell beer and wine on Sundays to 10:00 AM.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Point of clarification. Do we need to take a vote on that since that's mandated by the law?
Yes.
We do. Okay, so, so
I mean, it's not mandated by the law.
It's offered.
It's offered.
It's permitted.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, what, did, may I, through the chair? Do we, do we have anybody else that took advantage of that change, or is it just this gentleman?
Oh, we've had others taking it through the chair.
Okay, and did we vote on those as well?
As far as I recall.
Okay. All right. I'll check on that, though. Okay, so go ahead, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'd like to make a motion to extend the, the hours of operation on Sunday until 8:00 PM for the sale of alcoholic beverages from the current 6:00 PM.
Some of them.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set?
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of July 22nd, 2014, and August 5th, 2014. Now, are any of those the ones you had changes for?
Yeah.
And where they put through?
Not yet.
Okay, which, was that July 22nd or was it both?
Both.
Okay, then I guess we'll, we'll
We can go to August 5th.
Open session?
Mm-hmm, of both of those.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of 5th, 2014.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you have changes to executive also on 22nd?
There were, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of August 1st, 2014, and August 5th, 2014.
Some of them.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item under Old Business. The Board of Selectmen Liaisons. I've gone ahead and made a couple changes. Nothing, we've had, actually added some liaison assignments because we, we had some that we had to add members to. And from what I understood, as I went along, I guess it's, it's historic that the chairman is the public safety liaison, so, so we have made some changes there. I think everyone's just about more or less equal to what they had, just a little different. One thing we did combine, it was funny, I think you had the clerk and treasurer, and you had the collector or something like that, and since they're all one person, you've got them all now. It's only one person, but it's, it's, you know, instead of splitting the job, so, but other than that, they're, they're there to review.
Question.
Yep.
Um, does it have, does the public safety have to be the chair?
Um, it, it
Is it just some, something that we brought in the past?
Well, customarily, it has been, so I think I'll, I'll leave it like that as it stands, so.
Well, don't we, can we vote on that? Don't we vote on that as
Is there a vote for reorganization? Okay. All right, let's see. I guess I'll make a motion to, to approve the liaison assignments as listed.
What are you making motion for?
To, to approve the liaison assignments as they are, as they were the changes.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for
Any discussion?
For the vote. I certainly would like to keep what we had before. I know we had changed the chairmanship. However, I had already started developing some things that I'd like to see through with the liaisons that were assigned earlier.
I, that, given that, I know, like I said, I've been, I've, I know that I've been approached about the tradition of the thing, and I think I'd like to keep it, well, we can go for a vote, but I'd like, I'd like to vote on this first, and then we'll go from, if there's changes, we can go back to what it was, so.
Okay. So this is the vote for, to make, to change the police and the fire over to
And there's a few other things, too, and a few additions. All in favor?
What is this a vote for?
To approve that, that list as the
And then we want to take another vote?
The police would be going to them.
No, that would be it. If, if it passes, that would be it. If not, we'll go back to the way it was. So like, so we have a motion, we have it seconded, so all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so two to one. All right, so I guess we go back to where we were. Next item is the draft policy regarding the role of a liaison. I think that was yours.
Yeah, that was just put forth because we, we had some, a little bit of confusion on what a liaison actually does. It's very general, and primarily it just outlines that a liaison doesn't make, hasn't, doesn't have the authority as an individual to hire or fire an individual, that they can bring the request back to the board. Also, that the liaison maintains and initiates contact while acting as a connection between his or her designated department. The liaison will not enter into agreements unless the board has voted for him or her to do so. And then the liaison will regularly provide updates to the entire board. And I was looking for your input, Selectmen Gorman and Selectmen Federici, to see if you wanted to tailor that anymore, or if you had, had support. And it's just, again, they provided some structure where it seemed like there was not a definition of what a liaison is. And certainly, each person brings their own flavor. Me, if somebody comes to me, then I, then I act on it, whereas another selectman may have a different flavor, but this kind of gives a very general. And so I just brought that to us, just to see if you wanted to add something or take something away from it.
No, it looks fine. The only, I mean, obviously, the items, the second and third paragraphs are because of the, the vote that we made a few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Allowing the fact that not, no one selectman can compel a department head or anybody to do anything without the vote of the board, so that board, that basically takes into, that takes into consideration the second and third paragraphs, but that's fine to leave them in there. But yeah, this is fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Again, if you're, if you're coming in and you don't know that, and you don't have any guidelines, it's just to make things better for, for Islam Meadow as we go forward.
Through the board, my take on is, how far can a liaison go in the interview process before they have to bring it back to the board?
You mean like interviewing employees?
Let's say if you got 40 people
Yep.
That interviewed for the job, I mean, are we gonna, because of the time element, like what happened with the rec. department, I mean, we gotta, we gotta expedite how we do this a little better, you know? Do we get down to one person, three people?
Well, that, go ahead.
Through the chair. In the past, I've, I've noticed that it's, we've got, we, we do it on a case-by-case basis, and I don't know if that's the best way to do it, but perhaps we do set some sort of standards that you have, break it down to two to three, and you, those finalists come to the board. Or do we want to be in that, in that position? I think it depends.
My thought, and it's been like this for five and a half years, is
I have heard you say it before, yeah.
Yes. Is if, like, for example, you interviewed with our IT director. I don't think, I mean, not that I'm computer literate or whatever, I don't know, but I'm not, I, I don't think I can answer a question as far as performance of a potential IT director, or, you know, their background, or what they know, any better than the IT director himself. So I'm on, you know, I'm of the opinion that if you're a liaison to somebody, and you're a liaison to somebody, and you're hiring somebody, if you want to be involved in the hiring process, that's great, you know, you get yourself in the, in the department head or maybe one other person, and then bring it, if it's clear-cut, bring a candidate to the board. You know, that way, it saves the repetition of, you know, you guys get it down to three, then we come up and we ask them questions, you know, that, that we may, we may think up, but don't necessarily have anything to do with the function of the job. So that's my opinion as far as that, is I would rather see you and your liaisons do the interviewing and bring us a suitable candidate. And if, if by chance you say we're stuck and we've got three people, that are great.
Mm-hmm.
Then we'll bring them in here, we'll all interview them, you know. So, I don't know if there's any, okay? But as far as the role of the liaison, this, I like, you know, this is fine. This works fine for me, because that way, if, you know, if you get somebody new in, it gives them a guideline.
Right. So this is our second read. Hopefully, Mr. Broke can kind of format it a little better than what I did.
But how are we going to incorporate what you said in there, Paul?
Well, that's, that really has nothing to do with, you know, the actual role of liaison. You know, we can, we can, I don't think we have to have that down, that the liaison, because you may not, you know, there may be a situation where you don't want to interview with the department head, or you don't want to interview with the department head, so
Or that we all, we want to interview.
Right, or in the case of, say, it's police or fire, where they do the initial interviews and they bring the candidates to us, so. So it's, and that's not something that we can put in stone, but I think it's a good idea to, you know, sort of
Have an understanding.
To have an understanding of, is that, you know, once again, I, I don't want to reinvent the wheel and have three people come in here after you've both interviewed, you know, a bunch of people, and so. But that doesn't have to be in this role. That can, we can, we can take that on a case-by-case basis. So you want Nick to, you want Nick to finalize this, or you want to vote on it now?
I'd like to vote on it, but still have the same, have it formatted.
Okay.
Not changing the wording or anything, but just have it in a different format.
All right.
I don't type that well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this, the, the role of a liaison as set forth by Selectman Thorpe.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Next is Boards and Commissions. Conservation. We have a vacancy, and we have a candidate, I believe. Oh, no, we, I guess we do.
Resignation.
We have, yeah, we have a resignation of Michael McCall, which we thank him for his service on the Conservation Commission. And I guess in the past, Ryan Quimby, our IT director, has, has expressed interest in being appointed, and he is interested again. And obviously, we like to have full boards, and I don't think there's, Nick, ever been any other candidates?
There were two that were interested.
The only one that I'm aware of.
When I was going over the minutes through the chair, there were two individuals, but, I mean, maybe he just didn't, how do we make the public aware that these positions are open?
We send out a press release, we put it on the website, we put it on LCAP, make announcements that the Board of Selectmen needing. When those press releases go out, they generally go out to the town department heads, then distribute them, so people who work for the town and live in town can try and get the word out.
Okay, so this one went out when? Did we send this one out for conservation?
Not recently.
We didn't send it out again.
Do you know how many openings there are in Conservation?
I only know of at least the one.
Okay. Okay.
Does this have to go out for two weeks still?
Not two weeks.
I don't know how, I don't know how long it goes.
There's, there's no minimum requirement?
No minimum?
The only reason I brought it up was because there, when we did, when we appointed the others, and Mr. Quimby was going to be on the ad hoc, per the minutes that we just approved, there was another gentleman who did not submit a resume, but he wouldn't have submitted one because he didn't know that this was an opportunity. Can we just
Is there, should, if this has just come up, should we publicize it again? Do we have to, or is it just a matter of? Is there, should, if this has just come up, should we publicize it again? Do we have to, or is it just a matter of?
I think we should.
Well, the board, the appointing authority can make, as far as I understand, whatever decisions as to how to proceed, it wants to.
I mean, I.
Just to get community involvement.
Well, true. But, what is, you got any thoughts?
I think we should put it out.
Okay.
Myself.
All right, that's majority. So, yeah, why don't we post it again, and then we'll go from there.
With the recreation.
Recreation, I believe you already took care of.
Took care of it when that's done.
And the next one, Nick, is the Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust is comprised of different communities, member communities. They oversee the administration of the healthcare plans, and the board has appointed the, well, I would make a recommendation that the board continue in its tradition of appointing the town accountant to the position of voting member for the Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust. I have been appointed by the board as the alternate member, and I make that recommendation considering that there are, I believe, every entity represented, with the exception of one, is represented by an accountant or a finance department person. But that would be my recommendation to, to do that. And I would ask, if the board is willing, if that's the consensus, to do so, that you do so this evening, because we do have a Scantic Valley meeting next Wednesday morning. If the board wanted to delay the decision, certainly I could continue to be there as your alternate. I do intend to go, if the board makes the appointment with the town accountant, at least to make introductions and speak about, give some background support.
Yeah, I personally have no problem with appointing the, the town accountant. It's, I know our previous town accountant was on the board for his tenure. So, if there's any other discussion.
Now, does the, through the chair, the alternate, does that, does that alternate need to be a financial person as well?
That alternate is appointed at the pleasure of the board. And there's no requirement that any appointee be a financial person. It just seems that the entities have that, that first voting member, if you will, be that financial person, because they're often working with the data at the town level.
And we've already appointed you alternate, right?
I'm currently serving as the alternate.
Who's asking if we want to do that again?
All right. I, I, I don't know if you, if you have any discussion, but if not, I have no problem. But I can make a motion to approve Sarah Minard as the, what would she be? The voting member of the Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust?
So moved.
Is it, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So with regards, I know you didn't say anything, I'm going back to the alternate. Now, is there any one of you that want to be the alternate on that? Okay, neither do I. Okay, so go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we reappoint you right now?
Yeah.
I'm currently appointed.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
My appointment was until the board decided to make a change.
Oh, okay.
I don't know where to do that.
But, yeah.
So no change, okay.
You're not that lucky tonight. Okay, next item is the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, the community assessment for fiscal fourteen and fiscal fifteen, if you can help us with that name.
It's notification from the PDTA of the community's assessment for this year, and it's actually gone down a slight amount from the previous year. Down eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars from, let's see, one hundred fourteen thousand eight ninety-one, and down to one hundred fourteen thousand twelve-three.
Thank you. Have to make sure appropriations gets that information. All right, our next item is update on the building commissioner meeting with state officials.
Yeah, I talked to Dan Hillier on that, and it's, we're having a tough time getting the guy to meet with us, so what he's gonna do is write us a letter to the Board of Selectmen on the problems that we're having here, and that's forthcoming.
Okay.
Okay, so, through the chair, so we won't be able to talk to him?
No.
I, I kind of heard.
Yeah, we'll have to see what.
Are there any new developments? Oh, okay.
Not that I know of yet.
Okay.
But I haven't spoken to him myself.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so we'll wait and see, we'll go from there, because obviously, in a perfect world, we'd be able to meet him, but if we can't, then we'll see what his letter says, and we'll just go from there. All right, next item is the Board of Selectmen budgets, the budget book, which is wonderful.
Wonderful. That was a long time waiting.
Plus, it's a good source of exercise, because it weighs about forty-five pounds, but.
Through the chair, there were, there were some job descriptions that were missing. I have to say, Carolyn Brennan did do everything. She put a little chart in there and everything. She was very complete. Oh, I didn't see her sitting there. But she, she did, she did exactly, everything that I wanted was, was, was actually in there, and it was very helpful. But there were some that did not have the job descriptions, and see, one of them was in, were two new positions. So we really should, we really, because we hired from those job descriptions, so those you really should find a way in there. So I don't know if you can follow up, Nick, and ask, I don't, do we, we want those job descriptions, right? So if we can follow up and get those job descriptions, so that it can be complete, a complete working document? Okay. Do you want me to give you a list later?
It would be helpful if I had a list, and also, you know, it was a good exercise in that there are some job descriptions that are, if not outright missing, but also.
Outdated, maybe?
Outdated. And so perhaps maybe not immediately, since the budget will be so important, but over time, to get those job descriptions rewritten, so that they are more accurately reflect what's going on.
Exactly, how, because how can you set a budget with, when you don't know what everybody's doing? So, that's just my feeling. I speak for me alone. I want to make my statements, you know?
And the second item is capital requests.
Those, again, were included with your budget books. Also, though, you have today, we submitted a, I think a revised or more detailed information from the recreation director that was brought in today, and is in your heart, I believe in your heart copy, hard copies. I believe they've been added to your budget books.
Okay.
Through the chair, just so that I'm understanding, with regards to these capital plan, plans that are being submitted, they were, we are being directed to approve them first prior to them going to capital, is that correct?
Yes, that is, they, they need to be approved, so that they can be appealed, is my understanding.
Because it appears that some of them have already been submitted, or is that just the way I'm looking at it?
The chairman, that is, it was, I think, a little bit of a twist, that there was an online submitter form, and department heads did have a little bit of a difficulty, because you couldn't go there and simply just do it and then back out.
Got it.
So it may have been submitted, you have to do it. But I think that's a matter of if there were things that the board did not want to promote, that they could advise the department head, and then they can in turn notify the capital planning committee.
All right, thanks. I, I, go ahead. No, go ahead, this is.
I had a different note for, relative to the budgets.
That's, go ahead. No, believe me, mine was nothing important, go ahead.
The, I received also late this afternoon, and this is, it's an FYI, this is in your package, this is a draft appropriations committee budget calendar. So this will be the guideline going forward, and I'm going to just point out a couple, maybe a date or two. December second, right now, would be the budget meeting. That would be the date that the forms would be given out, and also preliminary, I guess, directions or directives as to what the departments should be submitting for their budgets. Beyond that, I would ask the board to take a look and consider, in time for the next meeting, what your schedule may want to be with your department heads, and at first glance, for me, it would seem to make sense that the board to try to have a budget meeting, at least a preliminary budget meeting with your department heads on or about the sixteenth of December, because the board doesn't meet again until the sixth officially of January, and budgets are due the thirteenth of January, at least going by this. And I think that that's pretty consistent with what's been done in the past, but it does give a very tight timeline, in a time when most people are very busy, which we're used to, but I'd ask the board to keep that in mind, and with, I would like to bring it back to the next meeting to try and solidify what those plans would be, so I can tell your department heads what to prepare for.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I think since Mr. Carabette is in the audience, and I couldn't help but note that when we were going through that nineteen sixty meeting, when we were getting the recreation department bylaws, the fire department was looking for an apparatus, and they were asking for twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. I thought you'd find that amusing.
Thank you for my time.
Yeah. All right, the next item is the LCAP position, the LCAP Assistant for Sports Production and Development position, consideration for hire. Don, would you like to come up?
Yeah.
How old are you, sir?
Well, thank you.
It appears you have a candidate.
I have a candidate. I think she's extremely well-qualified, and I'm looking forward to getting her going.
Okay. Has the board had a chance to review the information regarding her? Okay, Bill?
How many people did you interview?
Three.
Three?
Yeah. Did the interviews last Friday afternoon. Three very good candidates, all one year out of, one or two years out of college. Reflects well on what college communications programs are doing. Jamie's strengths really were her experience and her ability to work as a mentor, and relate to the high school kids as really the nuts and bolts of how we run the sports program. We couldn't do all the sports that we do without the high school kids, and it provides them with a great opportunity to maybe try something that they might like to do for a career.
And you have a great response in that.
Great response, and Jamie did serve as our intern last fall, and she was instrumental in developing our ability to do that a year ago. So I think she's going to be a tremendous asset.
All right, any questions from the board?
Just a point of clarification. The LCAP org had given, if I get it correct, correct me, had given Mr. Mackey the authority to go ahead and do the interviews, and it's similar to the situation with the recreation department commission, so he did a great job and got it done, and so he's going to get somebody in there that's probably going to do some good for us.
Great. Now, before we actually vote on it, how long ago did she, was she your intern?
She was the intern from, for the fall semester, a year ago. So, like, from September to December, January.
How good is, how long is a core HAC good for? We just got to figure out.
Two, two weeks.
Oh, that's right. Two, no, no, how long is it good for?
What's that?
A year?
It's really only good for a period of time, the one it's obtained.
Okay. All right, so we, I noticed that in there, so we will have to get another one.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, oh, just out of curiosity, where'd she go to school?
I'm sorry?
Where did she go to school?
She graduated from Northeastern.
Oh, okay, I was just curious.
That was her co-op, when she was with us.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Jamie Rook as the LCAP Assistant for Sports Production and Development.
So move.
Is there a second?
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. There's one other thing.
There's one other item.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. Now, I don't, is this something that should be in executive? If you're discussing salaries, hourly weight, hourly rates?
It depends if you negotiate salaries, or it won't be negotiated salaries based on a discussion.
Well, it's a request for an increase. Is that a negotiation? It's a request for an increase, is that a negotiation?
A request from, by the department head for an increase.
By the department head for an increase.
He can make the request to you, but your decision is for what to do, it would be an executive session.
Okay. All right, so we have your request.
Okay.
So we will take that up in executive session. All right, thanks, Don.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We could have waved at you.
You're so far away.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask the board to just go back one topic, again, with the capital planning?
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to get the dates about what the capital planning due, those requests are due to the committee by November seventh. The Board of Selectmen has the capital planning requests now. The board has one meeting between now and November seventh. That meeting's prior to the special town meeting, as it's scheduled at the moment. Do you, how does the board want to proceed to go about approving or not approving those requests, so that they can be submitted in time?
I don't think we have a choice but to go, to do it right before that.
Right, because we're not planning on having a regular meeting on the twenty-eighth, I don't think, right?
And we're starting at five.
Yeah, that's fine. We can take care of that, that, that evening.
And there's just six of them.
Okay. We can review them beforehand, and then come in with our recommendation or not, non-recommendation.
I would just suggest, Mr. Chairman, that as the agenda develops, that I speak with you about the starting time for that meeting. Just today, we confirmed two liquor license hearings for that evening, for a request for hours.
Okay.
And so the meeting right now is scheduled to start at five, we put them for five, five-ten, obviously, they're not very long, but considering that there'll be a three-week gap from the next meeting, we try, tried to keep things consolidated, but this now potentially could bring six department heads to the meeting.
Okay, if we have to move the meeting up, we'll, you know, we can discuss that as it gets closer, and we'll, we know that we, you can let us know what the situation is, and, you know, you can get together with each board member, and we can discuss, well, through you, moving, if we have to move the meeting up, you know, earlier.
Through the chair, is it possible that you could have another meeting dedicated to that? To the board, to the six directors, with regards to their capital requests? If, if the meeting should get so bogged down?
Well, I wouldn't want to, I would assume they'd be coming to that meeting if we're going over their capital requests.
Right.
So I wouldn't want to have them have to come back. I mean, you're talking about a separate meeting?
A separate meeting, right.
I think we could just, we could just start the opening, you know, have the opening of this, of that meeting. If we have to do it at four, we'll do it at four, you know? We'll see what, what the, what the agenda brings, we'll go from there.
Through the chair, I would just ask that you make sure that we have enough time, and give them the total consideration for their projects, and and if it may be to schedule another meeting, that we do so, so that we can give them the full attention and full consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under new business, the first item, I heard, we have a letter here that, I'd like to table the first item, I guess, is what I'm saying, because I've got conflicting information from a member of the planning board.
Oh.
As far as their response to this, so I'd like to get that clarified before we do anything.
So will we be able to do that?
Yeah, it's not till November twenty-sixth, so even, we've got at least two meetings before that, I believe, we've got the, if we get the information, we've got the meeting before the special town meeting, and then I believe we have, what is it, the?
The one on the seventh?
Seventeenth? No, we're not, we don't have a meeting on the seventh. Eighteenth, yeah. So that'll give us enough time.
So you got a table?
Yeah. Okay. Our next item is a request from Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, Saturday, November eighth, two thousand fourteen, from seven PM to twelve AM, and on Saturday, November fifteenth, from five PM to twelve AM. Entertainment for those dates, let's take those separately. Love a request from Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, Saturday, November eighth, two thousand fourteen, from seven PM to twelve AM. Entertainment at the Masonic Hall, also in conjunction with birthday parties, insurance is on file.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a request from Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license for, from seven PM to two AM on Saturday, November fifteenth. Oh, I'm sorry, Saturday, November fifteenth, from five PM to twelve AM.
Okay, yeah.
Entertainment for those dates at Masonic Hall, in conjunction with a birthday party, insurance is on file.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We've got a request from Eastham at a Unico Club regarding a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, on Friday, November fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, from seven PM to ten PM, at St. Luke's Church, four hundred Prospect Street, in conjunction with our portetta buffet dinner. Is there a motion to accept this request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a request from the council and agent director, and since she's here, we can put her on camera. Come on up, Carolyn. How are you?
I figured you'd just come here to watch.
I have to answer any questions.
You are putting on an event.
Yes.
Which is called Pasta Passion and Pistols, it's a.
You said it correct.
What's right here?
I know.
I can read. Thanks.
I can't yet, so.
Thanks for the consideration. It's just Saturday and Sunday, November eighth and ninth, from six PM to nine PM. You're looking for, I'll go through this, for a liquor license for two days, same dates and times, and that's just wine, beer and wine.
Yes, just no beer.
Just wine, okay, just wine.
Just wine.
And a temporary food service permit, you've got insurance on file, and the temporary food service permit has already been applied, approved by the health agent, and there's recommendations from police department, and the event is to spot, support the two-town trolley, so if you'd like to expand on that.
Sure. It's, how we're doing the wine is, it's only, the maximum anyone can buy is three tickets, so. It's, how we're doing the wine is it's only, the maximum anyone can buy is three tickets, so no one can get more than three tickets. So with their dinner ticket, they get one, and-
But if the acting's bad.
The acting's awesome.
Police chief's in it, isn't he?
Chief Melis is one of our actors.
Is he really?
And Bob Howard?
And Bob Howard, then one of our drivers for Two Town. It's an amazing event.
I can't imagine before the play.
So, yeah, so it's two, it's two nights, and we have tons of volunteers to do, to help with the serving. Bentley's will have some waitresses there who are tip certified, so they'll be there with, regarding the alcohol. So, yeah, we're excited. We're sold out, we probably only have a couple tickets left on Sunday.
And it's, and it's supporting the Two Town Trolley, obviously, because that's the, that's the trolley that goes between here and Hampden-
Or here and Hampden, yeah.
Brings seniors to appointments and whatnot.
Absolutely.
Very good.
That's being catered for the embroidery.
It's being catered through Bentley's.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the event, first of all, the liquor license for two days, same dates and times, and a temporary food service permit.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. You're off and running. Okay, next item is, is a vehicle liaison, I believe that's yours, Select McGorman?
Why we got this on here is because I think before we trade any vehicles in, or there's surplus of vehicles, I think we should have someone looking at these vehicles to see if we can use them in other departments, or before they go to auction, you know? Because I don't know exactly what happened, I know there's one vehicle, we needed a vehicle, and a couple of them broke down here, and we had no vehicles. They already auctioned the vehicle off. So that left one of these people that needed it without a car. So I think through the board, I'd like to make someone, and I'll volunteer, to be a liaison to go look at these vehicles before they're traded in or auctioned off.
Okay. And obviously, if you, you know, if we make you the liaison, you're gonna work in conjunction with the department head and see what their needs are, and, yeah, okay.
What I'd like them to do is before they, they're gonna do something with the vehicle, notify us, and plenty of time where we can do something about it, you know?
Okay. Okay.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Now, usually when a vehicle is about to be sold or auctioned off, it comes before the board anyway, correct?
I don't believe, yes, sir?
The department is supposed to do, I believe, under the bylaws, is before they dispose of any personal properties, to notify other boards and department heads that they have property they no longer need, and whether there's any desire by town departments for that particular property.
And do we also have to determine a surplus if we, if they wanna get rid of it? Do we then deem it surplus if they find no need for it? I know we've done that with certain items.
If there's no need for it, then the determination is for the disposal of it, according to the 30B, which is the most expeditions way. The more vehicles 30B allows you to trade them in without going out to bid.
Okay.
Sometimes you give it a better price on the trade-in than if you put it in auction. But there is a process in place where it's supposed to come back to the board or to the department heads before property is disposed.
Sure, well, yeah, obviously we-
So we do that now, but we don't wanna, we don't go inspect them or look at them, we just take their word, right?
Right. But, I mean, obviously, hopefully they know. But, yeah, I have no problem, if you have no problem, make a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, if I could have one question just for consideration, is this for Board of Selectmen departments?
Yes. I don't believe we have any jurisdiction over the DPW or School Department or anything like that, so it would just be departments under our purview. I'd like to motion, make a motion to approve Select McGorman as the liaison, vehicle liaison for the Board of Selectmen Departments Vehicle Pool.
So moved.
You, you're in it, you can't even, so moved.
Is there a second?
You can second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is town vehicle identification.
I asked for this to be placed on so that some of the vehicles that we own under our jurisdiction, that we place a decal identifying them as town vehicles in addition to the, the blue plate that they have. Of course, not for people, our police department that are detectives.
Right. And I know there's some other departments that don't have them, and I don't know if you've discussed it with them. Many fire, and I know we have that white thing out in the parking lot, that white Crown Vic that doesn't have, has blue plates, but if you don't mind, I might have you-
Sure, I don't mind doing that.
Okay, yeah, just, just check on those, and just make, you know, just wanna make sure that, what the reasons are for not having it, and we can go from there.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it on there, at least to start the discussion. Because if the town owns the vehicle, then it should be, have some sort of decal. And I wanted to know how, what you guys thought about it.
Yeah, like, I, you know, like I said, I'd rather have you go back to them and then come back to us, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to extend that a little bit, too, if we could. I think vehicles that are used by department heads, their own vehicles, which have some type of magnetic logo from the town that they stick on, so when you go out and see someone, they know who you are.
So this, this is, you're talking about town employees that are doing visitations or going to, in the pub, I don't-
Let's say like Mr. Halya using his phone.
Mr. Halya, okay, yeah, okay. But not somebody like a town-
Yeah, that's something else we can consider, too, so, okay.
Okay?
Because I've been out with them, and they, like, who the heck are you guys? I mean, with everything that goes on in this world, it's better to know that you're identifying yourself, you know?
Yeah.
So I'll check on that and get, get back to you.
All right, thank you. Next item is United Way Campaign, our representative.
Mr. Chairman, annually, the, this is the United Way Annual Campaign. I was contacted just today by their representative. And they want to know if the town is interested in participating again, and if the board would care to appoint a campaign manager, if you will. And I would just remind the board that I have served in that capacity and am willing and able to do so again. The board wanted to make the appointment.
I have no problem. Any discussion from the board?
How much you raised last year?
I don't know the figure off the top of my head.
And it's voluntary, right?
And the figures go, all of the slips go to the accounting department, so I-
Oh, so you don't tally it anyway? Okay, got it. Through the chair, I don't have a problem with Nick continuing with that duty, if that's the wish of the board.
All right. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint Nick Bro as the, as the representative to the United Way Campaign.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Nick. Next is the Board of Health.
Okay, it's Republic Services and Community Funds. We're in a joint discussion provided by the Public Health Services. And there's approximately, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, about seven, Nick? Seven towns?
Mr. Chairman, you're talking now about the number 25 Republic Services?
Yeah.
This was, I'm sorry if the topic's a little confusing. This one is relative to the hauler when we met with Mr. Stanis about the funding for the public outreach, and rather than the shared, I think you're talking about the health nurse. So this was a question back to the board, it's a carryover item. There's funding from the waste hauler, solid waste hauler, and looking for direction from the board as to how you would like to potentially spend it or allocate it.
Through the chair, I thought we had spoken about scholarships. You said yes on, to continue with the scholarships.
Coming on to that, yeah.
Yeah. I would ask, is there, what's the timeline on this? Do we have a little more, can we do it at our next meeting?
What's that timeline you gave us, Nick?
Well, we have, the, the ultimate last date would be the last date of the contract, which would be June 30th of 2015. But for their planning purposes, they would like to know if there's going to be any expenditures between now and January 1st for their budget planning. And it would help them out. So if there's anything that the board thought that would be worth applying these funds towards, now would be the time. Otherwise, we can let them know that it may be a longer horizon that the board's looking at.
Would it be out of order to let them know at our next meeting?
No, I don't think it would be out of order. I just wanted to bring this up until the board says, here's what we wanna do, or table it into another-
And we're limited to certain things we can do with the funds, I believe, right?
Well, just about anything, within reason.
I, I don't think that they would care for the, for the town trying to hire somebody, certainly. But they wanna do something that would make an impact on the public.
For, for vets, you know, for the pantry. You know, increasing the scholarship.
Yeah, that would be great. So, you know, can we just have a list for our next meeting and then bang it out? So we're probably gonna spend some of that money. But we'll have, we'll have the list. So should we just send it to Nick, who will send it to Bill, Select McGorman?
What's that, the, our options?
Yeah, options, yeah.
Yeah, well, either one, probably Nick would be the best.
Okay, that's, that's what I said.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get that checked.
Yeah, next item's the Public Health Nurse.
Yeah. That's where we get all these towns involved in this. It's a jointly provided public health service. And we met on October 9th. Nick and I attended that. And they have, we used up, there was a total of $110,000 for the cost of it. And they expended to date $48,476.44 cents. That left us a balance of $61,523.66. That's left, so what date did they say that's good till, Nick?
I believe it's March 31st.
March 31st, yeah. So then after that, we're gonna have to negotiate again.
Through the chair, do they have that stuff allocated already, the extra excess? Is that mostly salaries, or is that mostly programs that they're going to?
Well, salaries for two people, but one left for California.
Oh, which one?
I forget her name, but-
Okay, that's all right, sorry.
Kathleen Conley Norbit.
Okay. So do, do they intend to hire?
We're discussing that now at the next meeting.
Okay, and our services that we're receiving are still up to par?
But the money we're paying her would be left, you know, 'cause she didn't complete her contract.
Okay. All right.
And the next item we have is a- What do you do, a call center? Regional call center? Well, I'll have to let Nick talk about that, 'cause you went with the police chief and the fire chief. And I, I just wanna say one thing on that, Nick. I was talking to the fire chief today. They're looking for a building to house them. I think that building on Allen Street, the house out there, we, I talked about with him, would probably be a good location, 'cause they don't wanna build something, they just want something already up. So that might be a good site for that, for, you know, the regional call center.
I know when we went, when we went out there last, whatever it was, everybody wants it in their town, so it's not as simple as, you know?
Yeah.
And then when we had talked about the industrial zone, but I guess, believe it or not, because of its proximity to the airport and the size of the antennas, that wasn't a good location. But I'm sure once, you know, if we do, if we do get involved, and obviously-
Yeah.
There's a, you know, we can, we can suggest buildings, you know, in our town that might be feasible, so.
Excuse me, through the chair, so what's going on with the call center at this point?
At this point, there's an RFP that is out, making requests for proposals. And last week, there was a meeting in Long Meadow where the, both chiefs and I attended. And it was a, it was a conference of vendors who had taken out the RFP. They had their opportunity to ask several questions about the RFP itself and what, trying to get more clarification from their perspective. As a result of that meeting, the, the timeline has, had to be pushed back a bit. And what will happen next will be, there will be a date set for a meeting where all of the people who are going to make, who are, who submit an RFP, submit a proposal, will make presentations to all of the, all of the towns, all at the same time. Who will then, as I understand it, on that same day, make a judgment and rank the proposals, and make a recommendation for the award for who is going to conduct the feasibility study for the rec.
Through the chair? Is it possible that we can all be notified when that meeting is gonna be?
Certainly, it's possible. If the board attends again as a quorum, I'm, I'm not sure if it would make sense to appoint somebody who's gonna be the voting member for the Board of Selectmen at that time. I can tell you that you do have your two chiefs and myself who are attending those meetings.
I understand that, but I know that we went up to, Paul and myself went up to the, the call center, what was it, in Andover?
No, it was in-
Devens?
Yeah, Fort Devens, yeah.
And it was very interesting, and I really want, would like to follow through. I don't know of the other board members. I think, I think it's very interesting, and it's quite an expensive project. And I, I think we need to make sure we have as many eyes on that as possible. So I don't know if they would like to know, but I would like to know when that comes up.
Yeah, when the time comes, we could probably appoint you or-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. The last I heard was the date of November 10th is being considered for that reschedule, but there hasn't been anything confirmed.
Well, just let us know when it is, if that's okay with you.
All right, next.
Well, the next thing we have is share public health nurse, the surveys. They're sending out surveys, and Nick is gonna put it on the link. This is a copy of the survey here, there's approximately, I believe, 38 questions on here. Yeah, 38 questions. And this is kind of important to our town, so we can see where we may get funded for, say, if we have a lot of rabies cases, or malaria, or whatever. Each town is sending in their own survey. They're all alike, but sending from each town. So we know exactly what we need in our own town here. So like I say, Nick is gonna, I gave some of these to the senior center, 'cause they're less apt to go up on the computers. But Nick is gonna put on the link, so, and it'd be helpful that people could fill this out.
Oh, okay, so everybody fill that one?
Yeah, because with everything that's happening right now with Ebola and everything else, it's kind of important that we get these back, or people, you know, send them back to us, so I can bring them to the next meeting, you know? And, and what they're gonna do on the focus groups, the next item here, they're gonna, they're gonna be focusing on interviewing people. They already interviewed some people, I think Nick was one of them. And to find out, like, we may get a group or like the senior center, what the people in the senior center, what their feelings are, that they think is most important as far as sickness, or whatever problem is. And, you know, then go to the schools and find out, you know, I mean, schools, you know, when one kid gets sick, they all get sick, so. But that's what they're gonna try and do, focus on those groups. And then as far as the grant, you'll have to talk about that, Nick, 'cause you were more involved with that.
This is the second year that the town has been part of the Shared Public Health Nursing Grant. And I just apologize, I know it was a little bit out of order there with the update, but anyway. Just the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, is now noticed that there will not be a third year of the grant. And this is what we discussed at length at the last meeting, one of the topics, anyway. So the, the committee is going to, at the next meeting, have a discussion about sustainability. Meaning, do the communities feel it's been worth the effort? And now are you willing to put in X amount of dollars to continue the Shared Public Health Nurse? We don't know what that would be. The figure given before, $111,000, that incorporated an expansion of the grant, which- which included hiring people to conduct the community health assessment survey, which is a large project, and another project that was for a community health educator, which was being filled by Ms. Conley Norbit, prior to her departure. So, one aspect of that departure, of her departure, is that there's a certain amount of money that is left over. I think it was maybe thirteen thousand dollars, that could be potentially reallocated to allow for maybe an extension of the services for however that much we'll cover for a (inaudible), maybe two months, three months, whatever that amounts to. Or the purchase of equipment, or something, whatever we might be able to, the state has indicated that we could perhaps do that.
Oh, okay.
And, because in such a short amount of time to go and redo the bid process and try and come up with a health educator, and now we're, I don't know, four thousand dollars fewer than when we first went out to bid. So, anyway, there's a few different options, but that sustainability will be a question coming before the board, I would think during the budget process, to say, do you support it? And I don't know what our assessment might be, but call it some portion of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Question, through the chair. So as of right now, we don't know how we could be excessive. You don't know if it's going to be by population, or by how much we would use the nurse. Okay, at this time, okay. And then going back to the survey, what is the deadline for people to fill out that survey?
Uh, December...
Or the timeline?
December 9th, maybe?
Yeah. We'd like to get them back by December 1st, if we could.
December 1st, okay, so.
That way it gives us a little leeway, you know?
Okay.
But it will be an online, it is, will be available, it is an online survey as well, so people can do it that way.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Okay, take the next one. Update on the rabies clinic. They had a rabies clinic over at Brown's on October 11th. Their rabies vaccination for dog and dog license at the clinic. There were thirty-two dogs vaccinated, one cat vaccinated, and there were ten East Long Meadow dogs that were licensed. So it was fairly successful, and, you know, they wanted to thank Marge and, Marge and Mary O'Connor, Margaret Lockey.
Margaret Lockey, yeah.
Mary O'Connor, from the town clerk office, for doing the dog licensing. And Tom O'Connor and Melissa Legacy, you know, have this every year, so it's a lot less expensive to bring your animal to this than it is to bring it to a vet yourself and have them done. So it was pretty successful.
And AW Browns also?
Uh-huh.
You thinking AW Browns also?
Yes.
For allowing us to have it there?
I mean, this represents an increase from the 2013 fall clinic, which saw a total of twenty-four dogs and cats vaccinated, and three new licenses were issued. And a thanks goes out to all of those who helped.
Good job.
All right, we have one item of the new business.
Yeah, the grant. This MRC grant, in case some people don't know what this is, which I didn't myself, but I understand a little more now. This is like when, when we had that storm, when people were put up at Burcham Park School. And this goal, this grant went for, you know, different items they needed for people over there. And the lady who runs this is Carleen Eva, and she did a good job on that, at Burcham Park, I know. So, this grant goes for, you know, any material they need, or anything they may have in case there's a crisis. And, you know, they gave us our phone number here, in case we have to get a hold of her. But that's about all the information, unless Nick got more that I could give you.
If I could just add a couple of points, the medical reserve corps certainly come a long way under Carleen's leadership, and she is applying here for the annual grant for, for this. And the grant does serve to pay her a modest stipend of twelve hundred a year. And this is the grant process. She also will make purchases of different services, trainings, and equipment, and so forth, for the, for the medical reserve corps. I wanted to bring up, this is unfortunately, a situation, it's great, we do get to apply for and have received grant money, however, we don't get it until relatively late, and then the turnaround time is pretty quick.
Mm-hmm.
And Carleen will be submitting a completed application that will need to be reviewed and approved, unfortunately, the same night of the 27th, because she needs to get that out the door pretty much the very next day.
Okay.
So I would ask any board member that might have questions about what she plans to do, to please contact her directly in advance of that, so I can be ready for an up or down vote.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, thanks for looking for me.
That was a good job.
Next, I think, before we get to Town Council, why don't we go through meetings, invitations, and reminders?
Okay. That is your pleasure. So, Chair, grand opening invitations to Wingate of East Long Meadow on Thursday, October 23rd, from 4:30 to 7:30 RSVP by October 20th. Warm preview programming recording on Thursday, October 16th, at 6:30 PM, at the Elkhart Studio at 180 Maple Street. MMA Fall Conference of the Massachusetts Selectmen Association will be on Saturday, October 25th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at the Tri-County Regional Technical Vocational High School in Franklin. RSVP by October 21st. Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, October 27th, at 5:00 PM, Room C3, East Long Meadow High School at 180 Maple Street. And that may be tentatively changed depending on the agenda. Special Town meeting, October 27th, at 7:00 PM, East Long Meadow High School Auditorium at 180 Maple Street. Town offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. There's an invitation to the Hampden County Public Health Improvement Forum on Thursday, November 14th, in the Kittredge Center at Holyoke Community College. Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, November 18th, and the Council of Aging Media Room, 328 North Main Street, at 6:00 PM. Hazardous material tabletop exercise on Tuesday, November 25th, 2014, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, East Long Meadow Fire Station, 150 Summers Road.
Thank you, just as a point, Nick, Hampden County Public Health Improvement Forum, I don't believe Thursday is the 14th.
I just noticed that as well.
Yeah, is it Thursday the 13th, or Friday the 14th?
It is the Thursday.
Okay, so it must be the 13th, okay.
Okay, so the invitation for the Hampden County Public Health Improvement Forum Correction, Thursday, November 13th, in the Kittredge Center at Holyoke Community College.
All right.
And those are your meetings and your invitations.
Thank you. Town Council?
How are you, sir?
Good evening, sir.
Okay, why don't we go through the executive?
I would think that the items 32, which are contracts, would be executive. 33, collective bargaining issues and strategies, would be executive. Complaint procedures, 35 and 37 would be executive for discussions, procedures, attorney-client privilege.
Now, 34, didn't we already take care of that?
I believe you did.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all set.
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Could we amend the agenda and dispose of 37, actually moving it to the next meeting, if we could, please?
Sure.
Do we need to vote for that?
No, we can just table it. What about 35?
Nope, that's gone. That's all set. We're going with it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's good to go.
Okay.
So I believe item 31, which is the request from representatives of the Baptist Cemetery.
Okay.
And I, my mistake, I had attempted to email the representative of the cemetery a week ago, only because we didn't have any other address other than email. And I apparently either sent it to the wrong place, or it got lost in whatever's out there.
Okay.
Emailing. But I did speak with the representative today, and the basic proposal that I've advised by Ms. Kathleen Lucas, on behalf of the Cemetery Association, is that the cemetery is running out of workers or members.
Okay.
To administer the operation of the cemetery. They have graves that go back beyond the Civil War. Currently, they pay a private contractor who rules the law and maintain the cemetery. And what they are concerned about is that their membership is dwindling, and they're going to have no one left to administer the cemetery, take care of the cemetery going forward. They have a fairly substantial, at least to me it is, anyway, reserve for maintenance to care for the cemetery. So my understanding is that the proposal that they're asking the board to consider would be to have the association transfer the ownership of the cemetery to the town. And the town agreed to assume the responsibility for the care and upkeep of the cemetery, and that they would also transfer the reserve fund that they have to the town to be used for that purpose, to be used to maintain the costs and maintenance of the cemetery. She informs me that, in her estimation, there are probably eight hundred or so unsold burial plots within the cemetery, which it would be for the, if the board were determined to go forward with this, to determine whether or not to continue selling plots. If you're determined not to, there are a number of plots that have been sold where there are people who are still alive. So there would be some burials that would take place if the city or the town were to take over operation and maintenance of the cemetery. Now, I'm not asking, I don't believe you should be able in a position to make a decision tonight, but there is also a general law that allows the town, and it may even be the Board of Selectmen, I haven't read it in years, to create a cemetery commission, which would be responsible for overseeing and maintenance, the care, and taking the management of cemeteries that are owned by the town. And I, my ignorance, I don't know whether the town currently has any cemeteries that they own or maintain. But if you were interested in considering this, that is one avenue that might be used to do it.
Okay.
Is that over by your house, Paul, Baptist Village?
I'm not sure which Baptist Village it is. I don't know if that's the one up on the corner of Parker and, Parker and Hampden? Okay.
Yeah, Parker and Hampden.
Okay.
I might have another thing to submit, viable option to submit after.
All right, well, that, we'd have to, I would assume if it's an option, to us taking it over, it'd have to be submitted to them, right? If it was, if there was an option for someone else to take over, rather than the town.
Right.
Then that would be submitted to them, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we'll, we'll take this under advisement. All right.
The other non-executive item would be, I believe, item 36, which is just a police candidate update. And my understanding, as of today, was that (inaudible) has come in since?
It just came in hot off the press. You have it in your, we've got the approval.
Okay.
Hot off the press. So, it's just a matter, if I may, through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
So it's just a matter of signing him up now for the, for the academy.
When is the academy?
The academy's on the 26th, and so that's what, why the date of reinstatement is on that day, because I, that's what we had discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Earlier as a board. I did finally get ahold of the young lady, and I said, you know my board? I think they're wondering if you really do exist. And so I stayed on the phone, and she faxed it right over. And so that's why we're able to get it on for this evening. I really thought we weren't going to have any update, but...
Okay, so we really don't have to do anything?
The, the only thing that has to happen now, I believe, that the police chief, or we as a board, can enroll him. But I, I would prefer that we go, I would, whichever's going to be the fastest way.
Okay.
To make it happen. Because as, I've been informed that those spots for that academy are filling rather quickly. And also, we want to make sure that the chief isn't experiencing any lack of a staff member, and we want to fill that position as soon as possible. Well, make sure that he's trained, the position's filled, but make sure that this, this person is trained as soon as possible to get him to work.
Okay. What's she going to say?
And also, to that, on that same thing there, we got to make sure that kid gets his equipment from the last academy that was issued to him. And also, he has to get a pistol permit.
Okay, well, I believe that's up to him.
Right, he would have to apply for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because he did his application, right? And so, that was a rhetorical question. He, he did his application, that has been turned in to the chief. Everything, he's been taking everything that he's needed to, he's been fulfilling all the requirements that he's needed to fulfill, to be a candidate for the academy. However, and I understand the chief, the chief wanted to have this in writing before going any further. And so now that he does, I don't anticipate any, well, he doesn't have it yet, but now that we have it, I don't anticipate any further problems with that, or, so we should get this moving. And as the liaison, I certainly will have a conversation with the police chief to make sure that that's moving as expediently as possible.
Okay.
If that's, if that's the wish of the board.
We don't have to vote on this, do we?
No.
Okay.
This is just a document you've been waiting for to come back from HRD.
All right.
Oh, and just so you know, he does not go back on, on the, on the civil service list.
Right.
This was part of that appeal process. And also, there was a letter that we had received. Ms., I cannot say her last name, I'll say Regina, spoke with the local union there, as well as speaking with their attorney before they gave our, their answer to us. And I have those names also, if you need to have them.
Well, are we going, I know this was approved.
Yeah, we approved it already.
Well, no, she approved it.
Yeah.
Are those different, I mean, it doesn't say anywhere here that he doesn't go back on the list or anything. You know, she hasn't said that, does she?
Oh, no, that was a conversation that I had with her.
Well, I know, but is she going to give us something in writing to that effect?
Well, well, no, that's, that was the application that we put forth.
Right.
The, the application itself states that, yes, we can go ahead and hire him. But there was a question as to whether or not he would go back on the civics, civil service list. And because he really, they don't put you back, you go through this form here. And if, it's like, what's the word I want to use? This is like a, I don't want to say bypass, but it's the...
Reemployment.
That's reemployment. So it puts him back to the status where he was before.
Okay.
It does not put him back on the list, it just puts him back to the status where he was before.
Oh, okay.
Well, it says that right in here.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, executive session to discuss matters of non-union employee contracts, collective, collective bargaining issues and strategies, complaint procedures for the Duson Open Session, may affect the town's abilities to...
...to discuss those matters in the book. And the complaint procedures is for the board to discuss procedures and policies with respect to attorney-client.
Okay. What he said?
What he said, I mean.
Somebody's got to move it first.
I'll move it then.
All right, second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, oh, to return the link to adjourn.
Okay, so amended?
Yeah, amended. Make a motion to, for the previous approval, and also to return the link to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slack McGorman?
Yeah.
Slack McThorpe?
Yes.
Slack McFederces.